That's all I need. Like, uh. You can do a demonstration. Don't tease me, bro. You can do a demonstration. Yeah. Do a demonstration.
I can if you want. Yeah.
Idiot that I am.
I hope we have the air.
Mr. Eaton, how are you doing tonight, sir?
Veronica, air conditioning?
Yes, I answered.
The air conditioning is a lot.
Thank you.
It's warm in here. It's sticky.
It's warming, right?
Yeah.
It'll come quick.
Yeah, it just goes from one extreme to the next.
I know. Does anybody have about seventy million dollars? Anywhere?
Only seventy?
We can build some type of a new setup, right, Stephen? How you doing?
State of the art.
State of the art.
Full tech.
Like, yeah, like full tech.
All automated.
Wait, wait, do I get the view too?
No, don't know, man. He don't like that.
Seventy million, we get you through the door and that's about it, that bill.
Listen to me, when he told, when she told me how much that plant was, four hundred and fifty million.
That was, did I have the question?
Just the manufacturing.
Does that keep that question?
Yeah, that's what she said. Four fifty.
Let's about have some decommissioning fun.
I'm already exploring, getting plans for other municipal zones that were just built. I'm exploring, going to put together a conceptual plan.
You can call Bayhead.
Recording.
Recording?
Almost at Bayhead, leave this at seven five.
All right.
No, we're good, seventy?
Good. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to Public Law nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Like salute to flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under heaven, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I want to welcome everybody today to our meeting. We're going to start off with, uh, class three officer introduction.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak this evening. So we have two things on tonight's agenda. Uh, first, I'm going to introduce our recently hired class three special police officers, which have become part of our school district this past September. Uh, and then after that, Sergeant Eaton is going to discuss our TASER program, uh, which we moved forward with this year, about eighteen, two thousand and eighteen. Before I, I call up the, uh, new officers, uh, just a few things I'd like to, uh, reiterate that I spoke about at the Board of Education meeting, um, in August. In the summer of two thousand and sixteen, I became chief of police and among my priorities that I had, school safety and security was at, at the top. Very passionate about it. And right around the same time, I met with, uh, Deputy Superintendent Craig Whitley, and we shared that same passion when it came to the safety of our students and our safety of our staff and schools. So we sat down and we went over some priorities, some things that we think we could do to, you know, improve these things here in the, in the school district in addition. Uh, a full-time school resource officer was something that he had discussed as one of those priorities. At the time, he did not have a school resource officer. A drug and alcohol education type of program in our schools, our elementary schools. And third was to improve in our response to an active shooter situation in our school district. So we started, uh, with the drug and, you know, alcohol, uh, education prevention program, especially because you go on a, uh, inherent epidemic that we are, you know, double dealing with today. So I began looking at programs and I found a program called LEED, and you've probably heard me speak about it before, law enforcement against drugs. A program similar to the DARE program, but it also covers a few different things like bullying and social skills. So we started that program right around February, March of, uh, two thousand and seventeen for our sixth grade students over at the Milk Pong School. And since then, we continue to instruct them and we've graduated over hundreds of drug students from their LEED class. And so far, for nothing more, you know, positive on, you know, staff, students, and our parents around it. So very happy that we're doing that program. We didn't have a program like that, um, the last seven years, but, um, I'm happy that we have it now. And I want to move, I want to keep it in sixth grade, but I'm also likely to move to the eighth grade. So they get exposed to it in elementary school and they also get exposed to it in the, uh, in the middle school when we get there. After we got that program going, uh, I began speaking to, uh, Committee McQuinn, uh, as well as, you know, Board of Education Superintendent Craig Whitley, Pat George, Vanessa Corr, and we really worked hard to see what we could assess on our program. So again, as I said before, we never had a school resource officer. I don't, you heard me say before, I don't blame anybody, it was just different priorities at the time, at different administrations, but I'm happy to say that we got it done. This, this September of two thousand and seventeen going into two thousand and eighteen, we had our first school resource officer, Detective Charlie May, assigned to the high school on a full-time basis, something that I'm very proud of. And yes, he's there for the safety and the security of the students and our staff, but he's also involved building relationships, uh, you know, with the students and the teachers. And he's also there to, um, you know, talk about, uh, his drug awareness, education prevention. He's also my, my, uh, main instructor for our LEED program. So we, we had that program sorted and then we moved on to the ALIS program, which is a, uh, active shooter tech response program in, in the school district. And Lieutenant Sullivan, with the help of, uh, Detective May, Detective Dela Zala, uh, some other officers were involved in that. Last year, uh, the Police Department helped, and members of the Board of Education, the school district, helped train over seven hundred, uh, staff members here in, in school. So we're all now ALIS, ALIS training and moving forward with, with that this coming year. So three things we got done, um, right around the year. But that wasn't, that, that wasn't enough. So obviously, um, the shooting happened down at Ford, Ford Department. Again, if you can sit down and, and I would meet with Vanessa Corr and Pat George and Craig Whitley, uh, committee members, Gary Quinn, and, uh, kind of see what we can do better. And pretty much now, I meet with Vanessa, Superintendent Corr, probably almost weekly or every other week, because we're always looking for ways to improve our, our safety and security. So about a year ago, the state passed new legislation, um, class three police officers. We always had class one, class two, but now they perform as class three police officers. Basically what that is, is any retired police officer or state trooper or sheriff's officer, uh, that retires in through the standard, uh, can take a job in the school district as a class three police officer. So myself and Committee McQuinn, we sat down and sort of looking over this to see if we can make it work. We met with, uh, you know, Ms. Claus and Silette, Dave Silette, and tried to, Vanessa, Pat George again, to see if we can make this work. And I hope I don't make way out. And, uh, I did that once, sorry. But, uh, and, and we sat down and this past, this past summer, we were able to, uh, the township and the Board of Education were able to hire three class three police officers who I had here tonight. So we have Detective May, who was our school resource officer for the township. Initially, he was assigned to the high school, now is assigned to all six schools. Uh, like I said, he's a primary lead instructor. He checks in with the, with the, uh, officers in the schools each day and the staff, principals, superintendent's office, um, working with the kids. And we also, the district also employs, employs two retired police officers in the capacity of armed security officers. So between those two officers and our three class three's and Detective May of the SRO, we've really come a long way. As I said, a couple of years ago, we, we really didn't have any of them. You've already said this before, um, the Township Lacy Police Department and our, our school, Board of Education, we've gotten more done in the last two years than when it comes to safety and security. And we got, um, my, my twenty-five years that, that I've been here. And I, we couldn't have done this without, without them. And I, I really do, I says, I really do appreciate, uh, working with you guys, appreciate what you've done and support the Police Department and the township. I'm very happy we share that same, you know, passion for the safety. So, uh, President Claus, I appreciate this, thank you, Vanessa, Pat, and of course, our entire governing body, Mayor, and, uh, Committee McQuinn. Thank you very much. I'd like to bring up our three class three police officers. First of all, the guy I have here is Officer Mike Caputo. I'd like to say a few words.
Sure. My name is Mike Caputo. I am a retired chief of police from Tuckerden Borough. I'm a resident of town since nineteen eighty-three. I'm not going to go chronologically through my career, but I did thirty-two years, uh, on the job, retired, like I said, August first, uh, twenty seventeen. Became very bored with retirement and came aboard here at the Lacy TD as a class two, mainly, um, to do firearms investigations. Then when the class three position opened up and being a, a people person, I went to the chief and said, I'm interested. So now I'm in, I'm, I'm in the high school. Um, I graduated Police Academy nineteen, uh, nineteen eighty-four. Uh, I am a tw- twenty-sixteen past president of Ocean County Police Chiefs Association. I'm a Police Academy instructor along with a firearms instructor and, um...
Graduated.
Oh, yes, I graduated West Point Command Leadership School also in, uh, twenty twelve. Thank you.
My name is Robert Johnson. I reside here in town. I've lived here since I saw my gate. I retired from the Ocean County Sheriff's Department where I retired in two thousand and fourteen. Proud of that, I was a US Navy veteran of four years from nineteen eighty-seven to ninety-one. Then I, when I got out of the service, I was hired by Berkeley Township Police Department as a dispatcher from ninety-four to ninety-eight, and then I was hired by Sheriff's Department. Well, I was assigned to the Sheriff's Department. I was in Courts Division, primarily, the length of my career was in Crime Scene Unit, where I served there ten years, and then I was transferred to the Warrants Division. I was also a firearms instructor and a SWAT operator and sniper.
Thank you.
Great.
My name is Richard Santos. I'm, uh, I graduated from high school, I, um, joined the US Marine Corps where I, um, received, uh, honorable discharge for years. After that, I, um, um, went to Police Academy in Newark, where I became a police officer in Newark. Then, uh, after a few years there, I went over to our local Police Department where I retired in two thousand and seventeen. And, uh, I speak in, uh, fluent in, uh, Spanish and Portuguese.
We'll be taking advantage of that, I'm sure.
Surely will be, in a good day.
Superintendent Corr, would you like to ask a few words?
Hello, everybody. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, I cannot say enough, uh, positive things in partnership that, uh, our Board of Education has had with Chief DeBella. Um, and I'm going to reiterate what you said, that in my fifteen years, near fifteen years in Lacy, um, we have accomplished more, uh, with school security in the past two years than we have in my fifteen years, uh, in Lacy. It's an important topic. Uh, the feedback has been tremendous, uh, what we've accomplished with Chief DeBella, Detective May, and, um, Lieutenant Sullivan in, in training our staff employees in, in ALIS protocols has been, uh, tremendous. But the one thing that, um, I have found and feedback that we've gotten is, is so different for us is to look out the window and see our officers walking the perimeters of our school, schools. Something that we've never had and the fact that we have it now and that, uh, we're in constant conversations about standing in are exciting, um, necessary, and, uh, I think we're on a great path. And so I thank the Township Committee for the partnership that we have in accomplishing all of this. We could not have done it without you and we could not have done it without you. And on behalf of, uh, the Board, uh, we couldn't have done it without you either. So, thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
So again, one, one last thank you for everybody that's involved in making this happen. Uh, again, President Claus, Dave Silette.
Okay.
Again, we couldn't have done this without you. So I, I do appreciate what you've done, what you've brought to the township. Again, Vanessa, Pat George, thank you. So I'd like to, uh, turn it over now to Sergeant Mike Eaton.
Well, just before you start, I just want to say a few words, if you don't mind, Mike. Uh, I know, I, first of all, I want to thank the committee and, and the school board, um, because I, I was actually, before I got involved in government fifteen years ago here, I was on the, uh, school board, uh, twenty years ago. Uh, and it's, it's amazing because this issue, as I've told everybody at the schools and, and Chief DeBella, was actually on our radar twenty years ago and we have never, ever been able to accomplish it. I remember back in the day, Bob, Bobby LaRae and, uh, Mike Kilmurray, some of the old timers in, uh, in town from the school board, and myself were trying to find a way to take and do it. But dollars are always so important and it wasn't, the climate that we're in today was much different from what the climate was back then. So, um, I, I have to say, you know, when we were able to accomplish this as a joint venture between the schools and the governing body, it was something that not only meant a tremendous amount to me personally, but, uh, to the residents in this community, to people who have children in the schools. And it would never have been, uh, possible to put this together without, you know, Superintendent Clark, um, you know, Pat George. And, and I got to really thank, you know, Bobby Klaus, the school board president, Dave Silette, because you guys I know were the driving force to push the rest of the school board to take and take that step, you know, to make this happen for the kids. Because at the end of the day, you know, we've got the largest population in, in the entire community in six buildings and that's, that's something that we really truly have to take and, and go out and watch and, and take care of. Um, so this is really a, a huge milestone to be able to accomplish. Uh, the governing body, you know, I can't thank you enough because everybody, you know, stepped up and did what we had to do and supported and made the work, the thing work. And I know we have plans moving forward to try and bring more officers on in the future and, and continue to make the, uh, the schools, you know, more and more safer, the, uh, kids to be able to go there. So, uh, Chief, you know, uh, you know, Charlie, I mean, you did a fantastic job in the last couple of years as our school resource officer, and I know you, all these gentlemen are in very good hands with you still involved in the program itself. But, um, I just wanted, you know, thank everybody personally because this really, truly is something that means a tremendous amount to me and, uh, you know, it, it's very, you know, humbling to see this happen in my last couple of months being on this governing body. So it's, uh, you know, something that means a lot. Gentlemen, I wish you the best. It's a, you know, you all live in town, you know the town, uh, it's a great community and certainly, you know, do everything you have to do to make sure all boys and girls in those schools are protected a hundred percent. So, thank you very much.
If I could say a couple of words.
Just wanted to dovetail on some of the comments that, uh, Committee McQuinn has, has made. Uh, from personal experience, uh, working at the county, I could tell you, uh, I want to thank publicly Dr. Clark and, uh, the school board, Mr. George, uh, President Claus, uh, Mr. Silette, uh, and our chief. Anytime that we needed a program to come in there, uh, with certified health educators, master's prepared, uh, people, uh, the, the school board, it was a phone call away. Uh, and I want to thank Dr. Clark for that as well. Uh, a lot of alcohol and drug prevention is flowing through our school now. The synergy and the level of communication between municipal alliance, school board, governing body, chief of police, I think is something like Committee McQuinn said, that we could all be really proud of. Our DPW knows when the fields are, are necessary if there's an event coming up. So there's nobody that's left out. They say a chain is as strong as its weakest link. There's no weak links. And that's why you see the output and, and the camaraderie and the things that you do at our school events, at our meet the officer events, at the events at the high school, the red ribbon. And it even trickles over to our, our holiday events, our parades and our Fourth of July. So I want to thank the people sitting down there again. I'll name them, Dr. Clark, Mr. George, our president, Rob Claus, Mr. Silette, all the police officers that had a hand in it and that continue to really be looking out for our kids and I'm, I'm personally thankful for that. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Anybody else? You? I would, uh, I'd like to say a few words. Thank you very much to everybody. Uh, Dr. Clark, Mr. George, Rob Claus, Mr. Silette. It's a great thing. I know it's been passionate, like Gary said, it's been on, on his radar for a long time. Uh, even before I came on this committee, he's mentioned it a few times when we were together in different things. And, uh, I want to thank you for making it work, to make it happen. Chief DeBella and everybody else, thank you very much for making it work. Everything becomes a team here and that's what we did here. And, and there's so many other things we can do. I mean, that's only a start of what we're going to do and, and I think the future is going to bring a lot of good things, uh, between all of us. So, uh, I want to thank you very much. Thanks.
Now we're going to have our TASER demonstration. Pete, do you want to get down front?
Sergeant Eaton? Do you have something that you're going to show?
I do.
Here, this gentleman come.
These are guinea pigs. That's, no. I won't wake up.
Thank you for everything, Committee, for the committee. I am Sergeant Mike Eaton of the Lacey State Police Department. Been with the department for about twenty-four years now. Uh, I'm not going to bore you with my accomplishments or accolades. I'm just going to tell you that I've served in various, uh, capacities throughout the department throughout my career. Um, the reason I'm here tonight and the main reason is, uh, to present to the town, um, the knowledge that we as a police department are moving forward with a new, uh, weapon system that our officers will be carrying. That's the X-two TASER. Um, just before I show anybody this, as long as you know, there's no battery or parts in this, so pretty much all this at this point is an expensive piece of plastic. All right? This is what they look like.
All right, now people on that and let me shoot you.
It's important that everybody at home and everybody sees what this looks like. It's yellow in color for a reason, so it's easily identifiable. We, as police officers, know that we are constantly in the public eye. We also know that while we go about our day-to-day business and dealing with some nonchalant people sometimes, or people in distress, sometimes we have to use force against them. When we use that force, this is an option for us now. TASER was first introduced in probably nineteen seventy-four, I believe the company first pushed out those TASERS. Those TASERS were a little different than the technology that we, I currently hold in my hand. Um, that technology was more of, you've heard the term stun gun. Um, that was based more on, uh, a sensory, uh, system, which is more of a less pain compliance. That is no longer the fat. The fat now that it works on neuromuscular incapacitation. So what it does is it sends an energy pulse into the muscle, making them contract, sometimes very violently contract, which creates that neuromuscular lockup, which allows us the time to then subdue the subject, lessening the chance of injury to our officers and the subject. Um, even though this is not new technology, uh, we first saw it here in our county in around two thousand and fifteen. Uh, there's been a handful of deployments throughout the county, whether you heard about them or not. Most of them were, uh, against emotionally disturbed persons, persons whose actions were self-injurious. In the past, our officers would have to go either hands-on with these people, or if the situation escalated unfortunately, they would go to lethal force if it was so warranted. Uh, I can tell you from personal experience, I have had to go hands-on with somebody who was self-injurious to themselves. During the course of that interaction, we had to disarm that person with a knife. We also, uh, were covered in bodily fluids and blood. So exposing myself and other officers who was involved in that to potential, you know, disease, uh, you know, potential for injury. Um, and as the committee will attest, police officers are not cheap assets. They invest a lot of, uh, money and a lot of time in our training and to have us here. So when you have an officer who's injured, not only is shorting the road, but it, it costs the township money, it costs the taxpayers money. So if there's anything that we can do to lessen that impact, to keep our officers on the road, I know I'm all for it. This has been something that I've been pushing for, for most of my career. The county finally, uh, because the, uh, program is, uh, overseen by the prosecutor's office. Uh, the chief had to actually send letters of his approval, which had to be approved at the county levels for us to even carry this. So at this point, um, the chief has seen that we were all going to issue these to our supervisors. You will see them on the road as I am wearing one. This is how it will be worn. So if you see it on the road, that's what you're looking at. This is this TASER. Um, this TASER has a camera on it also, which is also a requirement by Attorney General Guideline. Um, if we wore body worn cameras, that would be a different thing. Uh, however, with the TASERS, anytime the TASER is turned on, it will be recording both audio and video. So that's to protect both the officer and also to make permanent record of the incident. Um, the TASERS will hold a lot of information. I will be, uh, taking care of retention of those records. So the, uh, the records that are made by the TASER have evidentiary value, so we will retain them as would any other evidence. I want to keep this very short. Like I said, my, my main purpose for being here tonight was to just introduce this unit to everybody. So if for some reason they see them on the street, they see them being utilized, they know what they are. They know what they are. Very easily identifiable, it has yellow and it's got a unique shape to it, right? But, like I said, we're always in the public eye, so you never know what's going to be sent. So we want to make sure everybody's clear on what we're putting out on the street. Um, I would take any questions in the committee, if you have anything for me?
I do have a question. I, I'm sure there's not one per officer, right?
Not, well, right now, we have six units.
All right, and so, and so how do they, how do they, uh, I guess to get dispersed?
As, at this time, the chief has seen that we're only going to, uh, send them out with, uh, with supervisors for the initial push-out for the program. Um, this is a big step for us. Number one, retention of evidence as far as video, uh, retention of, uh, the, uh, process of keeping up to date with firmware, software updates, downloading of the unit. So it's a, a very intensive process as far as just an upkeep of, of the system itself. Um, we want to make sure we get everything right before we push anything further than that. So those six units will be distributed throughout the, to the department as far as the justice supervisors. Does that answer your question?
Does. How much is something like that?
How much is something like that?
It's all right.
I don't want to give you a wrong number, um, because it's a different cost as far as the TASER goes and the camera goes, they're two separate units. Like I said, if, uh, so a single, uh, X-two CED goes for one thousand dollars apparently, approximately. So it's not a cheap, uh, thing. A TASER camera goes for about five hundred dollars globally.
My point being, that's not, that's, price doesn't mean anything when it becomes to a safety and features that have.
Yeah. Oh, that is the thing, I mean...
So right now, we have six of them?
Six of them, yes. Like I said, you, 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 you weigh that in the cost of the loss of an officer to injury. And, and I can tell you, like I said, that's why I brought up from personal experience, having dealt with this over my career, the, the risk to yourself, the risk to the subject. And the thing is, maybe that person's just having a bad day and they're injurious to themselves. We, we as officers are not going to stand there and watch somebody cause harm to themselves. We're going to act. So it's putting the person at, at risk, putting officers at risk. This gives us another tool and, and other possibility to have a good outcome. Um, I've seen my share of bad outcomes over the years. This gives me at least a tool to hopefully stop some of them.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, yeah, you want to do a photo? Want to do a photo?
Yeah.
Why you going, like freezing?
It's cold.
Exactly, smumpy to cold.
Last time Mr. McConnell stood next to me, I thought he was really shy.
Oh, okay, don't fight.
So, uh, give me, uh, the mayor.
What are you saying? What are you saying?
He's close to my heart.
I'm getting at it. This is what I usually do. I usually duck behind here. Put the TASER against one of their necks or something, yeah, like you're getting TASER.
Are we going that way?
Who's taking the picture?
Who's taking the picture?
It's got a camera.
Yeah, who's taking the picture, gang?
Charlie. Taking picture?
Yeah. What do we take out? You have that on?
I was like, yeah. Hold it up to like somebody's neck or something, yeah.
At least one. That's it.
Don't go anywhere. You guys want to talk, we don't give a big deal.
I don't know, but now, now this is getting like too big here.
I'm excited. You can, you can, you can come over and make it over. It's a squeeze. You can sit right there, Mike.
It's actually hidden, they can, they can see over.
Uh, this looks awkward, Zach.
All right, Charlie.
Well done. All right, let me just take the, 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 the. That's Mike. This is better, uh, Charlie?
Watch when you're done, that's going to be the definite chirping factor.
Great, thanks for the one.
No, Chief, we'll have it on, we'll save it for later.
Have to watch, watch it.
Good to see you, Ron.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm not doing anything.
I'm not sitting up here without an attorney, so...
Now we're gonna go right to item number one, I guess.
Number one.
Alright, so, um, as most of yous have probably have seen and been invited to, Rotary and Lacy Methodist Church and Lacy Municipal Police Foundation are hosting what we're calling Trunk or Trail this year around the walking path of Gilly Park on October twenty-sixth from four to eight. Um, it's a, a free event, so any business or individual that would like to participate and set up a table, it won't be from the trunks of the cars, you will set up tables around the trail of Gilly Park, can, um, hand out, um, candy, um, and goodies to the youth or even the adults that care to dress up and collect, so I just need permission for them to have that. They have provided me with a certificate of insurance.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and that's all I have for this...
Are we dressing up?
If, if, listen, it's up to you guys if you're dressing up.
I think, I think if we ask some people, they probably say we're okay, the way we look.
Look like clowns already. We just need a, we just need a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and we can go right into township.
Township, right into township. Adequate notice that this meeting has been given accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to public law of nineteen seventy-five. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon, and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Like to have a salute to the flag and then a moment of silence.
(inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the public, for which it stands, One Nation, Under God, Indisultable, with Liberty and Justice.
Forgot the bills.
Yep, forgot the bills.
Forgot to pay, boys.
I don't know how well that would go off.
Uh, number one, Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two fifty-six, awarding a contract for the purchase of gasoline.
Resolution Township Lacy County Motion State New Jersey Awarding a Contract for the Furnishing and Delivery of Gasoline Fuel to Petroleum Traders Corporation. This is with the Stafford Township Cooperative Pricing System. Uh, there were four bids that were received on September twenty-first, the lowest bidder was Petroleum Traders Corporation. This runs through October of twenty-twenty.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two fifty-seven, authorizing the refund of deposits.
Resolution Township Lacy County Motion State New Jersey Authorizing the Refund of Deposits to Help for the Use of Municipal Facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Who's it?
Cortolo.
Mr. Cortolo? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution twenty-eighteen dash two fifty-eight, authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution Township Lacy County Motion State New Jersey Authorizing the Payment of Township Bills in the Amount of Five Million Four Hundred Seventy-three Thousand Seven Hundred Thirty-eight Dollars and Twenty-Eight Cents.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Cortolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor, Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Monthly reports?
For September, the, uh, Department of Community Development collected receipts in the amount of ninety-six thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Municipal Clerk's Office collected receipts in the amount of six thousand six hundred forty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Road opening permits for the month of September were collected in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and thirty dollars, recycling commodity in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two dollars. Motion to accept the reports is read.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next. Motion to approve caucus meeting minutes of September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve township meeting minutes of September twenty-seventh, twenty-eighteen. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve membership in the Bamber Lakes Fire Company Ladies Auxiliary for Laura Walters. Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have no add-ons.
No add-ons?
No.
Comments from the committee? Uh, Deputy Mayor McDonald?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, couple of things, yeah, I came in this evening, I found this in the mailbox, uh, this is from the New Jersey Society of Municipal Engineers, I'd like to read the first, uh, this has to do with the reconstruction of Bayfront Park, I'd like to read the first paragraph. "On behalf of the New Jersey Society of Municipal Engineers Incorporated, Rewards Committee, I am pleased to inform you and your mayor, the above captioned project was selected as an honor place recipient at the municipal parks and recreational projects D category." They'll be, and that's for, uh, CME engineers who, who basically designed it, um, that they'll make that down there at the, uh, society's annual luncheon on November fourteenth at the municipal alliance, uh, municipal, what's it called?
League of Municipalities.
League of Municipalities, so just wanted to bring that out, another award for that park, it's just, anytime you go down there, it's, it's packed. Phew, uh, we had Lacy Day, which was, uh, a very good and successful, um, talked to Jim about it, he estimated about twenty-five hundred people showed up. Again, another great, beautiful day, no humidity, skies were gorgeous out there, people walking around, not as many as last year, but there was a reason for that, is that we had a home football game. Um, unfortunately, because it'll be the last Saturday of every, of September, every other year we'll run into that problem, but that's, it is what it is, but it was a good time. Uh, we just approved it, the, uh, trunk and trail, which will be on the twenty-sixth of October, should be a good time. Um, and then we have the ghost stories down at the museum, it's four dollars for advance tickets and five dollars at the door, and they're on the nineteenth and the twenty-sixth, which will be on Fridays, and six, and I wanna say eight o'clock to check the, uh, recreation Facebook page for those exact times. Uh, I was on there this afternoon looking at it a little bit, and it seemed like it had a pretty good turnout, so you might wanna get your tickets in advance. And then, uh, on Monday, we were able to go out and visit Holtec, which is the company that is buying, in the process of buying, the, uh, power plant, is very impressive, very, very impressive, and, and with the, uh, way they make the dry storage casks and things of that nature. Um, really went after them about the, the, the fund for the decommissioning and how that is used and managed, and I was, uh, very pleased to find out that it's, uh, managed by Mellon Bank and Northern Trust, and that, and we have them, uh, the, there's actually regulations, and they're very specific, and I was reading them over, as to what they can and cannot invest in. So it's, uh, uh, I'm, I'm a little bit more confident in, in that side of it, uh, and at the end of the meeting, one of the things I did ask them was their vision for that property after they decommissioned it. Now, didn't expect to get an answer, but they hemmed and hawed and said they weren't ready to tell us what they were thinking of. So, to me, that's an indication that they were thinking of something, and I think that's a good sign, um, so I'm a little bit more positive about this whole situation, uh, but again, it's one step at a time, one day at a time, and, and as we go forward and as they go through the process, you know, we'll have to see how it goes. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Committee McQuinn?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, uh, piggybacking on what, uh, Tim said with regards to the visit to Holtec, you know, we were fortunate, because all, all five of us, as well as Veronica, were able to go out there at one time, uh, and visit their plant out in Camden. Um, it, it was, you know, very informative, it was something where we were getting, uh, fortunately able to get a lot of questions answered that we all have had, uh, in the back of our minds. Uh, we, we know that Holtec is the contract purchaser for the site itself, uh, but they still have to go through the process of getting the, uh, NRC's approval prior to them being able to actually step into, uh, the, the shoes that Exelon fills right now as the owner of the site itself, but, uh, the plant was very impressive, there's no question about that. Um, you know, there's still a lot of questions to be answered, there's still a lot of unknowns that, um, we'll kind of be informed about as we go forward, because Holtec is actually going through the process right now with their application before the, um, NRC for their license approval. So it, it, it did give us a little bit more of a comfort feeling about the company itself, uh, but again, you know, we're, we're optimistically cautious that, uh, the process will move forward. Where, you know, my, my biggest thing, and I think the committee is, you know, probably on the same page, is, is the, um, spent fuel storage that's down there, whether or not the spent fuel is ultimately ever gonna be moved off-site, and if so, when, and more so, if it's going to stay there, you know, we believe as a community, as well as seventy-five little communities throughout the United States, that we deserve compensation for the spent fuel being stored here, and we're continuing to fight that fight. Uh, Congressman MacArthur has been, uh, working on that down in Washington, and they, there was a bill pending which never made it through the senate, but we're hoping that, that, that bill gets, uh, reintroduced after the, uh, first of the year, and maybe we'll see some success in that bill moving forward to, uh, not only compensate, you know, communities, but also hopefully that they'll cooperate with a permanent facility, uh, if Yucca Mountain is not gonna be the ultimate, uh, depository that's gonna be accepting this fuel, so it's gonna be an ongoing, you know, situation as things evolve. Um, as far as the, the tax revenue goes, right now, we're, we're still, you know, in good shape, we have not heard that, uh, state tell us anything that anything is going to change anytime soon, so we're, we're, you know, gonna keep working with our local legislators to make sure that, uh, we're in the loop with everything going out and, uh, going on out in Trenton when it comes to the, uh, tax revenue we do receive from the, um, energy tax itself, so, thank you very much, Mayor.
Committee McKennis?
Mayor, um, yeah, I don't think, we got sidetracked last meeting, so I don't think any of us mentioned Alex's Lemonade Stand from three Fridays ago.
September fourteenth.
So we all attended the Alex's Lemonade Stand at Gilly Park three Fridays ago, or something like that, and I just wanna acknowledge that, um, you know, that the great crowd and the, the number of volunteers and kids and parents that were there to, um, to support Alex's Lemonade Stand. And, and in particular, I wanna acknowledge that the parents that are, uh, still keeping the girls engaged, um, you know, fundraising money and, um, just, uh, uh, putting out awareness and doing good work in the community. I think they've been together about four years now, and they, they really do a great job of, um, uh, you know, just coming out and, and supporting their, uh, cause. Um, uh, one of the, uh, I'm gonna comment on Holtec in a minute, but I, uh, recently I've had a number of people, um, approach me about, um, uh, claiming that we've been giving tax breaks to big box stores, I just want, I'm just making the, uh, residents aware that for as long as I've been on the planning board and as long as I've sat on Township Committee, that's, that's never been the case, we've never given any tax breaks to any big box stores, uh, nobody in town gets a tax break. And speaking of tax breaks, we did all go visit Holtec, who received a very large tax subsidy from the state to build their facility. Um, the, um, for us, for Lacy Township, my opinion, Holtec is probably the best, uh, the best option for Lacy Township. They, um, uh, they're local to the state, they, they have a manufacturing facility, an enormous manufacturer, manufacturing facility that actually makes something, and they are, um, well-connected politically, if, in the event that they hopefully rebuild on that site one day, and they have enough, um, political, um, wherewithal to navigate the approvals process in New Jersey. That's all I have, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Committee Cortolo? Thank you, Mayor. I too will have a couple of Holtec comments. Um, one of, the takeaway pieces for me was, um, what I'm about is, and, and all of my colleagues up here, is transparency. So when I had an opportunity, uh, to talk to the decision makers over there when I was there with my colleagues, I said, "Let, let, let's practice good corporate leadership. Send us some type of quarterly update, something that we might be able to post to lacytownship.org. Tell us what you're doing over there, keep us abreast and informed of different goings-on, uh, where do you stand, is there anything going on over there mechanically, we know the NRC's gonna have a presence over there, but I think our residents have the, the right to be informed, I cannot require a private company to inform us because it's out of our jurisdiction, but they've given me assurances that they will do that, so I'm gonna hold them to that. Uh, we have their business cards, I think that's the right thing to do for the people that have questions that may be ongoing. Uh, what I was comforted in seeing was, as our Committee McKennis had said, it's a million square foot facility where they make things over there, I mean, it was, it was like a refreshing of, uh, a large part of the Camden waterfront. Uh, they are New Jersey company, we received assurances verbally from the president of the company, uh, Dr. Singh, uh, that during the decommissioning process, uh, he has said that if the skillset is there, he's gonna hire Lacy people first, if there's subcontractors needed, New Jersey people second. Uh, so, um, he, he and his executive staff did seem, uh, on face value in the beginning to be very welcoming of this governing body, I was encouraged by that. Um, they offered an open door policy with regard to information, uh, they furnished us with these packets, uh, that were very informative, uh, one I, I brought this evening. So, we'll wait and see, as Committee McQuinn said, cautiously optimistic, but I thought it was time well spent Monday, we were there for the vast majority of the day. I wanna congratulate all our departments on, uh, Lacy Fest, um, it was an outstanding day, as many weather as Committee McTune or Deputy Mayor had said. And in, talking about the plant, and one of the things that people have heard me say up here, and I'll close with these comments, Mayor, um, when we ask for help from the, the plant, uh, the people that surround us here in the county and at the state have been there for us. I'm talking specifically about our freeholders, I'm talking about Congressman MacArthur, and we need a letter, and we need support, and we need advocacy, those are the folks that have been there for us, and that's an apolitical, non-political statement. Um, it's easy to fact-check what I'm saying, uh, it's been a long history, so I wanna again say thank you to our Board of Chosen Freeholders and Congressman MacArthur for being there for us, he often spends time in Lacy Township. And that'll conclude my comments for this evening, Mayor, thank you. Pete? Uh, I only have a few things. First, uh, the Minister of Alliance Halloween Party is the twentieth of October, eleven o'clock at the middle school, I told Heather I would do it. Every year it's a pretty good turnout, Gary, you usually go, all of us are usually there, I mean, it's a good turnout, a lot of kids. As everybody said, Lacy Day, what a great turnout. Um, I wanna thank, uh, the Police Department, the DPW, all of the organizations, all the businesses especially that came, I, I thought that was really, uh, I think we had more businesses there this year than we ever have, so I think it's gaining more and more success as time goes on. Um, I'm sure everybody noticed the buses that were lined up along there, um, that was, uh, something that I thought was very proactive on different, uh, options that he had. Um, Winoka Harbor Fire Company had their joint operations drill, um, over at Ace Garden Center, um, they all got together to do different drills, it was Winoka Harbor, Forkett River, I think Ware Town was there?
Yes.
Uh, I think I've seen it Berkeley, I, I went there for a while until they started the drills. Uh, I really wanna thank Ace Garden Center and Lidl's for allowing them to come on there to really, uh, to practice, 'cause it's a perfect scenario, 'cause they had all the buildings in the back, the front buildings to, you know, do different drills, so they can, you know, more, learn more about different things that are happening. Um, Breakfast with Superheroes, um, that's a fundraiser to support Lacy High School Scholarships, uh, Saturday, October twenty-seventh, uh, eight AM to ten a, eight AM to ten AM at Applebee's on Main Street here in Forkett River, um, it's sponsored by the Women's Club of Lacy, um, so I'm gonna be dressing up as a superhero, what do you think?
Who are you gonna be?
I don't know. I'm gonna think about that. Pete, what do you think? I think you should be me.
Oh. Pretty good.
He served it up.
He doesn't have the hair for it, Pete.
Doesn't. So please attend it, it, the adults are ten dollars for earlier registration, twelve dollars at the door, uh, kids are seven dollars, I think it'll, it's a, for a good cause, um, so please attend. Uh, other than that, I would like to, again, uh, thank all the volunteers, uh, all the things that people do in this town, uh, that they never go unnoticed, believe me, uh, I wanna thank them all, uh, they make Lacy what it is today. That's all I have, uh, I'll open it up to the floor, comments in the public, Regina? Oh, before I forget, I did forget one thing, before you start, um, Run for the Hero, uh, did everybody, I was able to attend it here before, it was right before Lacy Day when they came through here, uh, our police, the, uh, all the runners were there and everything. Um, something happened that was really strange, last year, as I was Deputy Mayor, we took a picture of when they raised a flag on the fire truck, okay? When we raised a flag, there was a cross in it, okay? From the, yeah, from the sun. From the, from the sun coming through. This year, I was totally, I think everybody was, I looked at it, we did it again, and Veronica?
There's a cross right in the middle of the stars.
Same exact thing, and I know you can't see it, but the same exact thing happened this year. Same exact situation, so that meant something. So everybody was kind of touched by that. I'm sorry to interrupt, I'd wanted to bring that up, so I didn't get it. Thank you.
Regina sent us a message from her to reach out a few questions. A few months ago, I had asked about all the traffic counters that are seen throughout the town and they're still out there. A few of them have come apart. I was wondering if you might want to tell the County Road Department?
It's the DOT, State DOT.
It's a state.
Yeah, and they've already been informed. I'm trying to have a meeting with them. I've already informed them that there's-
Yeah, some of them are loose and they're flying around in the streets, so they're not doing such a good job counting if they're broken. You guys went to visit the Holtech plant in Camden. Did they show you anything like a cross-section of the stainless steel casks that they?
Sorry.
They showed it.
Okay. I'm pretty sure their casks at San Onofre are leaking, so I don't know if we'd like thicker ones here, you know? So that needs to be looked into and if you guys want to Google that, just Google San Onofre, Google their casks and see what problems they have in there, okay? That's one of my concerns. Another concern I have is, you mentioned the money in the bank about the decommissioning fund, okay? Supposedly nine hundred and eighty million is available in that fund.
It's up to over a billion dollars.
One point zero five five as of six of eighteen.
One point zero five five?
That was before the last couple of days. Because it is invested in different acquisitions.
Okay, because one point four billion is what was supposed to be the amount needed to complete the full decommissioning process. So Holtech applied to the NRC to keep this proprietary, the information about the funding. I would hope that the township is going to ask for proof, because if they don't have enough money, taxpayers get stuck holding the bay all the way here.
No, no, no.
So we have to make sure the one point four billion to finish the decommissioning process will be available. Do they think that fund is going to grow?
Where did you get the information that it's going to be not given out to the public?
I didn't see that.
You just said it.
Oh, proprietary, yeah, well, are they going to keep in touch with Lacy about all the money?
They have to file, they have to file reports. Every two years, they have to file a report with the NRC as how the money's being invested, what they have used it for, and that is public knowledge.
All right.
So, and what we've, I talked to the lady in charge of it and said, can we get quicker reports? We can't force them to do that because they're all private companies, but any report that goes to the NRC, we will be CC'd on.
But at this point in time, do you think there will be one point four billion available where they have it invested? I mean, it's already grew to over a billion, you're saying, from the nine hundred and eighty million?
I've never heard of it. Where'd you get the one point four billion for the total cost of decommission?
Janet Toro.
Who?
Janet Toro.
I've never, I've never heard that number.
That's hard and I've never heard of it.
Yeah, way harder.
No, she said that nine hundred and eighty million is in the fund right now, but the decommission actual work would be one point four billion.
Regina, I'm going to directly answer your question. In the event that they go bankrupt, the federal government steps in and covers it, and yes, that's taxpayer money.
It's very close to being where it needs to be.
Do you understand? Yes, if they invent that anybody could go bankrupt. So if they do go bankrupt, the federal government is the backstop and it's ultimately taxpayer money.
And on the other side, Regina, the reason Holtech wants to try and take and break this thing down in less years is because whatever money's left in the fund at the end of the decommissioning goes the whole time.
Right, it's in their interest to save as much money as possible.
Yeah.
Really?
That's how they make that money.
And I understand that they picked up two other power plants too to decommission. So, and they're going to do a lot of-
They're making this thing work.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Bill Stiles, 10714, Forkett River. I'm here to plead to you folks, ladies and gentlemen, to help me get a sandy grant to fix my street. My street is constantly flooding. It hasn't been for many years, but I've been, I've talked to people at CAFRA, at the freeholders, I've talked to the water people, I didn't even know it was a water, stormwater department, the water enforcement. And they told me that there are grants available, they even gave me a case number before I realized I didn't represent the town. The town has to apply for a sandy grant. Some of the damage to the street, the street did settle after Sandy, it was almost like a foot of water. So that, it did settle. Right now, the tide, I've had, I've had twenty-five days of floodwater on my street that I could barely get in and out of my property. I have some pictures here, some ground. I'm going to save these two. If you're to pass these down and take a look, it's, this-
I believe so, I think it was.
We had this condition twenty-five times this year and the, there are three lots to be built yet. The, my house and my neighbor's house, we built to elevation seven and our bulkheads are at elevation six. We're waterfront on that street. So, in the three lots that are to be built on that, on that street, if you do anything, they have high bulkheads so they can fill in their property to whatever elevation is created raise. So it won't be a problem to any homeowners. I have, I have papers in front of my house that run down pretty steep. That's my house in the picture and I can adjust to whatever elevation we can get. It would, it would be very helpful if we could raise the street a foot or so, eighteen inches would be great and would alleviate ninety-nine percent of the water on the street. Now these two pictures-
Before you continue, I'm just, you feel, and somebody has looked at that and told you that eighteen inches will solve that problem?
Yeah, I was an operating engineer for forty-five years, so, you know, this is, eighteen inches would be the minimum. It could probably go to two feet. And the reason I say that is, while you're looking at these pictures, this one was taken on my street and this one was taken a block away on Maui at the same time, so.
This is actually something we have looked at quite a bit in the past. We've talked about it a lot. We've had, we have held meetings.
It's been a budget problem.
It's not so much a budget problem. The biggest problem is, as I said, the road does, has, has to come up, but if you, if the road comes up, where does the water go? And it goes to the lowest, I mean, it's not rocket science, it goes to the lowest property. I've been to, yes, I've been to the Hawaiian streets, yes, many times.
There is about this much drainage in that part of the town. The water, when we get heavy rain or high tide, the water goes on people's property. It always has.
Right.
So it's not going to be a drainage problem. The water goes on my property now, so if we raise the road, it's still going on my property.
But if your, if your property is that built at elevation seven and your neighbor is not, the water's going to his property.
Yeah, but we're all going to raise the elevation.
Well, that's, I said, that's-
The three new houses that are going up, they're going to-
I don't think any of us have a problem applying for the grant or trying. This is something we've done many, we've talked about it a lot.
On that picture though, there's a small ranch there that, see, that's the problem we have, these little, you got the, like yourself, you-
The one right before your house.
But then you have these old bungalows that are still there and we can't do something and flood somebody out.
Okay, the bungalow on the-
Is that a little red and white?
This one right here, the red and white one.
That is-
Now gone?
No, that's Ty Barrell's.
Oh, Ty's?
Yeah, he's, he's going to put a new house there in a year or so. He bought it just, he raised his bulkhead up to elevation six point five.
Okay.
So he, he's not going to be a problem. The property across the street, there's a vacant lot across the street, that bulkhead has been raised.
I live across the room.
And some of that was, been filled in. And the next lot, Ty is working on the next lot right now, raising the bulkhead and putting a new bulkhead in. So all the properties will be up, up this side and the road will be down here. And so if we can, if we can get done before they develop their property, they'll just match the property. It's not, it's not, there's not a lot of utilities there that are involved.
Water, sewer, gas?
Yeah.
Those are, those are the utilities that would be there. Water, sewer, gas, they all have to be raised as well.
No valve boxes or anything.
No, no, well, they don't have to be raised.
They just extend them.
Yeah, they have to be extended, right.
Right. So.
See, yours, like Steve said, we've, we've looked at all the, it's the Hawaiian streets. We've been down there every time we get a storm in the Northeast and, you know, we're out there looking at it and your street is very unique compared to the other ones, because a lot of the other ones are very big and there's a lot of those little bungalows still out there.
Right, yeah.
I mean, what, what, you know, he's saying here makes a lot of sense if we can apply for the grant and have success in getting the grant, because chances are though, we're probably going to have to get some sort of letter from each of the residents that when we raise that, if we get the grant, we're successful in raising that road, you're, you get water, that's your problem, not, not the town's problem, because we, we can't, like Steve says, move it from here to here.
Right.
And then ultimately, the homeowners are starting to chase the town to take and correct their own, own problems on their own due to the lots. We even tried check valves on some of those pipes.
Was that one of the ones, your street has the check valve on it, right?
No, it just has the pipe.
Yeah.
Just the pipe.
But no matter how high the bay comes, it's got to go somewhere.
That's a problem, that's in.
Yeah, it's coming out the pipe.
But if we can raise the road up, we can even put a small catch basin right where that pipe is now and leave it right where it is.
Okay. How does Beach Boulevard stand to these streets?
It looks pretty dry on Beach all the time, yeah.
Yeah, Beach Boulevard is almost three foot higher than the property in front of my house.
Than your street?
Now, this street, this street is level with Beach Boulevard. There's no pitch on this street at all.
Them pictures at the same time?
Yes, these are five minutes-
And what street was that?
This is Maui.
Maui.
But that's, that's pretty much in line with the main road.
Yeah, his dips down.
And as far as drainage, there's no drainage on Maui either, so.
Correct, there's no catch basins in any of those streets.
I've got other pictures from two thousand and four, two thousand and five with the same, it's same scenario. So it'll require milling the road, getting ar blend and building it up with ar blend and just temporary sloping it so access to the property to the way they are and then as we build and work our properties, we work to the elevation of the road.
Well, you, you have the information for the grant or is there a contact person that's-
You said you had, you had a case file or something, open text. So, so give me the case number and your contact, because obviously they already have that earmarked in their system somewheres.
Okay, this is a gal from the Water Enforcement Department, six oh nine.
Oh, give me six oh nine. Go ahead.
Two nine two, three zero one oh. And then-
What is her name?
I didn't get her name.
Okay.
But that was the office, and then there was the DEP office.
But do you have a case number? What's the case number?
Oh, yeah, it's one eight zero three.
Case.
Zero six.
Eight zero three zero six.
One three, two three, one one.
So hopefully they have it marked what they discussed with you, so they'll know what grant to tell me that they were speaking about with you.
And I talked to Maureen at the DEP and these people all say if it's to relieve stormwater, there's no permanence required or anything. I said it was just improvement, so.
We'll check on that. I don't believe that at all. That's how they make their money, is charging fees.
Yeah, I know.
Now, since you're in that area, how many other streets are involved over there?
I don't think, I think mine is the worst.
Yours is the worst.
Right. The other streets have water that backs up, maybe fifty feet or something like that. It gives a little water.
Wasn't Oahu another one?
Yeah.
Oahu was the other one?
And, yeah, Oahu was another one that backed up and with that valve wasn't working on that.
Yeah, I, I tried building-
I went down there with Casey and he was telling me everything and, and-
I tried building a flap myself with a gasket on it, but every time a boat goes up or down the river, it starts flapping and closing and it won't stay closed. So it's an engineering project, you've got to cut the pipe on an angle so it wants to hold down and, you know, I've done this stuff on jobs, so I know it can be done, but-
It's easy to build and chip it in.
It's a project, it's a project, right. So anything you can help me on that? And how much control does the town have on the sale of this seventy-eight hundred acres out here in Fort Braga?
Very little. Eight thousand acres for, for the Brunetti's site?
Yeah.
None, really none.
Because this is some of the most valuable property in Lacy. It's, it's, that many acres comes to twelve square miles, that's bigger than our town.
Yeah.
Well, the eastern side, right, yeah.
And if, if there's any way to keep that from going to a park and getting green acres money, because you'll never be able to, it'll be, there won't be any hunting, fishing or anything allowed on there or it will be more regulated with a laundry list of regulations.
The county, they, they have, once they get the land in their hands, they're already entering into a contract to buy it, the whole tract itself.
Okay.
Once they get the land in their hand, they have the county planning office doing a study on it and determining what kind of passive recreation can be used in different places. I know the hunting group that hunts out there in the Lacy mining operation has already asked to meet with the county freeholder board, which they're intending to do once they get a little further down the road, because they'd like to, they leased that now from, from Brunetti and they'd like to continue to be able to release their birds and still utilize it.
Right.
The, the information I've gotten from the freeholders themselves is that they're going to take and book at everything and they're not saying you can't hunt, you can't do this or that. They just have to take into a plan overall to make it, you know, as much passive recreation as they can. The one thing that they do want to do is they want to stop the weekend warriors going out there with the four-wheel drives and, you know, the ATVs, which are mostly coming out of New Jersey, you know, we've had some major incidents out there with people camping out there.
I've had neighbors that did say beer drinking and-
Yeah, yeah, so that, they want to control that, it's, you know, use it for what it should be used for.
Right. Do you have any idea if there's a matching fee with that? Because I talked to somebody in the freeholders' office and they said it was matching money for that, so that's-
Out of green acres.
Because if it says fifteen million, they're going to pay for it.
Yeah, green acres is the match.
Fifteen million from green acres?
No, 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 the fifteen million, you would get a portion of that from green acres itself.
I don't even know if it's a fifty-fifty.
Yeah, there's a, there's a split there, the green acres is going to kick in.
Okay. And if we got some other projects in town that have to be done, that sandy money could be used for, we better get on it, because they, they just rebuilt the Cedar Bridge Tavern and the county or the historic department, whatever it is, put up three hundred and seventy-five million dollars, but they got, I guess, matching money from a sandy fund? How come a sandy fund won't, does anybody know where the Cedar Bridge Tavern is?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if that was destroyed during the storm, whether a tree went through it or something else, they could have gotten it. And there was all different levels of sandy money and it was opened up, and, and again, there was a lot of historic money, historic preservation money and stuff.
In sandy?
In sandy money, because they had money left over, so they did relabel it. That's how we also, once they relabeled some of the disaster recovery money, that's how we got the money for Bayfront Park. So some of the stuff was relabeled and if you resided in that county and had, were able to put in the funds for the money, and there was multiple rounds, we didn't get our Bayfront Park money until round three.
Right.
And some were grants, some were low-interest loans and some were principal forgiveness loans.
Right, okay, so, so I don't know who you would apply to in a sandy park, you know, and-
Well, it's, it's usually through the DEP or some of it's federal. Well, it's, it's usually through the DEP or some of it's federal. We have, I have, you know, we are applying for some Sandy stuff right now that just opens up again as well. And we're waiting to hear back on the competitive process of it.
Okay. So if you can, if you can get something going on my street, everybody will work with it. There's no complaints. My, my neighbor's gonna be here tonight and he had to pick up his wife at the airport or something. So, and Ty would have been here too. He's had no problem. He's got all the construction equipment too. And it'll, it would be, say, two feet in front of my house of fill going to nothing. And the street is 30 feet wide and 300 feet long total. So it's not, you know, it's not a major, big, big problem. I did probably 30, 40 yard loads of ar blend would, would raise the street up to the elevation to get it out of floods. So, and the ar blend is still reasonable.
And do understand, we apply for this, the process that it takes to get the approvals and then to put the money in place and everything else. You're not looking at a project to start until 2020 at this point.
Well, please hurry up.
And, and ease. I'm just, I'm just, I'm just letting you know that. I know, but it's 2020 before you might see a project begin there. I don't want you to think it's gonna happen this coming spring. Cause it's, it's, I mean, it would, it would be great if it could, but I can't make you that promise.
No, I know. But after I talked to these people, I figured there's, there's still a door that may open. And, and I don't want to miss it because if there's water like you're seeing in pictures in the wintertime, it's 20 degrees, you can't possibly get your car out. The tires sink right in the ice, you know, it, it's, and the fire truck won't come down there. The, the mailman won't, FedEx won't come down. You know, you can't get in deliveries. So, so whatever you can do, I would really appreciate it.
We will work on it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Share your pictures.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right.
Seeing none, motion to close the floor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
I just have to do the resolution to go into executive session.
Resolution 2018 dash 259, authorizing the convening of an executive session.
Resolution attached to Lacey County, Version State of Jersey, authorizing the convening of executive session to discuss matters of personnel, anticipated pending matters of litigation property and contractual matters.
Move it. Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennison?
Yes.
Mr. Curtolo?
Yes.
And Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
Move it. Second.
Long paper?
Aye.
No action will be taken after this meeting.